All right, so we are reconvening the council meeting. And at this point in time, as we reconvene the council meeting, there were two items that were being discussed, and we were wondering if there would be a motion. At this point in time, the first item that I will take is the one that we discussed at length, and it's the request of the city manager to start evaluating the position of an ombudsman that will be tried to start this year, hopefully with existing staff, but then further on to be considered to be added to next year's budget pending communication. But the hope would be that this would be a wash, that there would be no additional expenses to the budget because this would eventually end up being a person in our staff. Is that correct, Councilwoman Ortiz? This is your motion. I want to make sure that I've said it right. And Councilwoman Padilla?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have -- so is somebody making that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Ortiz and Councilwoman Padilla. At this point in time, do we have any discussion on this item? Again, the net budgetary expenditure of zero. Councilwoman Padilla?
Just as a quick follow-up, follow-up what Councilwoman Ortiz said. I would appreciate the opportunity, as well as any other council member, to give input to the council, to the city manager as to what we are looking for for that position to make sure that it's clear so that everybody gets their two cents to refine what that definition is of what that ombudsman will do for us. And if it's easier to just do it from electronics electronically, that's why I just want to make sure that everybody gets their opportunity to have their input. Thank you.
Okay, additional comments or questions on this motion and second? Seeing none, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor DeLaEsla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
No.
Ortiz?
Oh, yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
I was on mute.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Ms. Valdivia Akla voting no, the motion passes.
Nine having voted yes, that motion passes. At this point in time, we take on the Second Amendment provided by Councilwoman Ortiz. This amendment would include an additional $20,000 to be invested into homeless initiatives. Councilwoman Ortiz, could you please refresh us with the parameters of those $20,000? And how do you envision those dollars working through the police department?
Then we go through the behavioral health services. Right now, there's 100,000, and it looks like we need another 20,000 in there. So that's what they would be used for. Now with that, I'll make a motion. I think Jessica found where she could get that, or if not, I think she's going to write a check, so she should chime in somewhere.
Ms. Lemandola, is there a place that you have found these dollars?
It is not my checkbook. So I don't know if this is along the same lines of waiting to see the full amendment package, if there is additional ones. But I did have a conversation with Councilwoman Ortiz and Councilwoman Padilla about this, and the $20,000, I do think we can accommodate in terms of the actual budget document. At the end of the discussion, we can point to where it'll be. But I think, quite frankly, it's going to be managing the budget to a point that we will likely end up having it from personnel costs throughout the year. Or I'd like to also work with a couple departments to look at their contractual line. So it's an important amount for the Vallejo program, but I think it's reasonable that we can manage it in the budget.
I'll move.
Do we have a second? Councilwoman Padilla, Lesser seconds, sorry, Mike and Mike. Comments or questions with regards to this amendment?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. The question would be, I guess, of Councilwoman Ortiz or whoever. Is this, has this been discussed with the chief? Is it an issue that the chief thinks is an issue or just something we want to do?
Great question, Karen. Mayor, if I may, if I may respond.
Please do.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Karen, I talked to the police chief today, and we discussed several things, and that was something that we felt needed to probably be in there.
Okay, and if I can ask a follow-up, we had discussion earlier about possible COVID money coming in next year, and so not wanting to put something in the budget that therefore this special need because of COVID wouldn't be eligible for CARES money. Could the right person, I mean, it's a similar thing as what we talked about earlier. Maybe Jessica could respond?
Ms. Lemandola?
Sure. The Vallejo contract is an existing contract. At the beginning of the budget discussion, this is one of an items that the chief did bring up, and the city manager also recognized as a need. But given our overall constraints at the time, not knowing the overall package, we weren't, we weren't able at that time to identify funding. It is slightly different in that it's an ongoing, only in probably semantics, but it is an ongoing contract. The need isn't increased necessarily by COVID public health emergency. It's something that, based on conversation with the chief and the council members and the city manager, that's something we'd probably continue to want to do regardless of whether CARES Act was put forward. Excellent question. If we were able to achieve additional money, federal money related to COVID, and we were able to identify a specific purpose on how this type of outreach was related to COVID, we would be able to use additional funding for that purpose.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the body? All right, at this point in time, if there is no more comments or questions, we proceed with the votes. Councilwoman Ortiz, you had a comment?
No.
We proceed with the votes.
Mayor DeLaEsla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Ms. Valdivia Akla voting no, the motion carries.
Additional amendments at this point in time? Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just asking, I don't know if this is the appropriate time in the meeting. I would like to offer a proposal of a directive, not an amendment. And so if this isn't the point to bring it up, please let me know. But I would like to address an issue that we spoke about earlier in the evening, but as a proposal and a directive, so let me know.
I think this is the point. I think that most of the individuals that I know that have some amendments have spoken, and I think that you're going in the same direction that I probably was thinking of, which is the initial pot of money that was discussed. So take it away, Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if we're talking about the same thing, but earlier, there was discussion with regards to the franchise fees and the funding of that pot of money. I believe that there is a need for that, but I want to be cautious in that I don't want to hamstring the city in any way, shape, or form that we might be able to be reimbursed for that. So what I would like to offer is a directive to the city manager, not as an amendment to the budget, to the extent there is a need for the $77,000 to be placed in the franchise fees fund, and that to the extent that CARES Act money does not become available, that I would ask the city manager to still, working with staff, try to find those funds as requested in the amount of $77,000.
Councilwoman Ortiz? That was a second. Comments or questions on this directive to the city manager?
You're muted. Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to get him unmuted, I just had to click on the window. Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted to just double-check with the city attorney on this that using this method would free up using the CARES Act money for this, if that became available. Is that correct?
Yes, you're correct, Deputy Mayor. This would not jeopardize the CARES Act funding. You're not making a budget amendment at this point, so there's no money being placed into the budget. If the CARES Act funding does not become available, then what Councilmember Padilla is asking is for the manager to simply try to find those funds to the extent he can, if there's any available.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just caution everyone, we have worked really hard over the last 15 years to make sure that we did not do last-minute direct allocations to an agency. And I'm not trying to cast any aspersions or anything, but just to honor both the administrative process that the staff goes through with following out on the budget, as well as the tremendous amount of time and work that the Social Service Grant Committee does on the others. So I would encourage, if people want to do that, that it be strictly an amount of money, but not one allocated to any particular resource, to let the staff do their due diligence on how to get it out to people.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcaraz?
Thank you, Mayor. Can't that just go to the line item?
Yeah.
So that's that. Okay, thanks.
Are the two individuals, Councilwoman Padilla and Councilwoman Ortiz, who have made this motion for this allocation of funds, should we not have enough CARES Act dollars amiable to the language that the councilwomen have talked about, that it's a $75,000 or $77,000 line item of searching for those funds with the intention that those funds would be used for utilities, without specifying which organization they would go to? Councilwoman Valdivia Alcaraz?
It's gas and electric, Mayor, where it's needed. That is what runs short. So it has to be specified. It should be specified as such, I imagine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So specifying gas and electric, no line, just a line item without an organization, but having the $77,000 that we would search from within our budget, should we not have the support from the CARES Act? Is that, is that an amendment to the language that you are all comfortable with?
Mayor, since I made the proposal, I'm comfortable with that.
Councilwoman Ortiz, you seconded? Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. This would allow us to have additional funds, 77,000 funds, as a directive to the city manager. Should we not be able to receive enough funds through the CARES Act, that then the city manager would have the drastic fine, $77,000, so that we can continue supplementing that amount of dollars that goes to our citizens? At this point in time, are there questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor DeLaEsla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion passes.
Okay, at this point in time, do we have any other amendments? And if we don't, I'm excited to say that we've only moved this $20,000 efficiently to our team, which is a big thing tonight. And if there's no further amendments, do we have a motion to approve the budget as amendment this evening? Councilwoman Nager makes the motion, Councilwoman Ortiz seconded it. Comments or discussions with regards to our budget as amended? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know the budget is tough, and I know we all look for things that are good for our constituents. And with COVID, I know that we only put $15,000 in for the, our back-to-way, back-to-work children. I'll roll with that this year, only because of the COVID, and we didn't spend it this year, so I'll roll with that. But I'll come back and ask for the amount that I always do year after year. I think it's very important to keep our young people working, give them something to do and earn a little money. But I want to thank all those that supported my amendments. I feel that it's very crucial, and I appreciate you, and I know that the constituents will as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seeing no other comments, I guess if there's no other comments, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor DeLaEsla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yes.
City manager, I think this is historic. We have 10 yes on a budget, especially on a year as difficult as this one. I want to make sure that I take the time to extend my appreciation to the staff. Jessica has been phenomenal to work with. We have a regular meeting. I mean, there's been weeks like this one that I'm like, I'm not even going to bother her. And I know that the council has worked very hard. Councilmembers went line item by line item to make sure that we were working together. Councilman Dobler talked about making sure that we take a look by committee at some of our projects. This has been a working budget process, and I want to thank the staff facilitating this for all of us in the council. Typically, in years past, the budget is not something that we've all approved unanimously. And then, most importantly, that we've done so with all this challenge and without increasing the bill levy, which we thought that we were going to have to do in a time of crisis. So to the council, I tip my hat off to you. Thank you so much for your phenomenal work. That being said, we move on to the non-action items. The clerk would read.
These discussion concerning adoption of the 2018 Uniform Plumbing Code.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Our last item tonight is, in a non-action, is talking about our Uniform Plumbing Code. We currently have the 2012 version, and we are in the process of requesting your approval consideration of moving to the 2018 version. So tonight, I have Richard Faulkner here to present some information regarding our current code and the changes that we are requesting for your consideration. Richard?
Thank you, city manager. Mayor, council, I come to you with a recommendation concerning the 2018 Plumbing Code, which is published by the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials. The city adopts building codes and trade codes for the safety of our citizens. We have a number of them that we are using presently. These codes address residential and commercial uses, new construction, as well as remodeling. We also have two other codes that we are working on that we will be presenting, hopefully later this year, for adoption. As technology moves along, we try to keep our codes up with technique, technology, techniques, new construction techniques, so we make sure that we try and keep the codes current as they come out. But we do try to make sure that we vet them for our community. These are international codes, and we want to make sure that the codes that we adopt work for our community, so we don't just accept the codes as they come out. We review them, and we review them with people in the industry, master plumbers, industry members, and engineers. And the code is also put out by the same group of people, people in the industry, so we make sure that we have a code that is appropriate for the uses that we're using. Oh, I'm not moving along. No, I just, I'm just, sorry, it's been a wonderful night. The plumbing board that is bringing this, has requested that I bring this recommendation to you, is also made up of people in the field, engineers, master plumbers. We, they're requesting that we adopt the code. Also, as I went through the code, and they came up with the amendments to the code, I took the code to plumbers that actually use the code to get their input, so the stakeholders are aware that we are moving forward with the adoption of this code, and they accepted what we were going to do. So there was no negative response back from the stakeholders on us adopting this new code. We researched other communities to see if they have adopted codes, which they have, but in this, in our area right now, we're the only people that use the Uniform Plumbing Code. That code, from what we have learned, has, if you have questions about certain things in that code, it's all in the book. Whereas the International Code, you have to get another book, look up other resources. So the code that we use is more complete, and it answers the questions that the contractors may have, and it's right in the book. So that's why we use the Uniform Code versus the International Code. But as you can see, the other communities also have, are current on their codes as So the plumbing board has recommended that we adopt the Plumbing Code with amendments, and I would like to say that one of our former plumbers was a member of the Uniform Board, and a lot, we have some amendments that have been adopted by the Uniform Plumbing Code because of that. So the amendments that we're making are going down because of the things that we're doing are being accepted by the Uniform Code. Staff also recommends support of adopting the new code. And I'll stand for any questions that council may have.
It's nice that, I've been through one of these before, and typically, we had questions of why we are behind on the code, but typically, it's wonderful to know that we are ahead, because it takes a little bit of time for us to be able to catch up with all the changes and make sure that all of our contractors are able to keep up as well. So thank you for your presentation. Additional comments or questions for Mr. Faulkner? Councilwoman Hiller?
Just a quick comment, having been through this before, maybe on this code, yeah, actually on this one, just for the new folks, if I've got this right, they are probably working on a 2021 code right now at the Uniform, for the Uniform Plumbing Code, right?
Yes.
But if I recall correctly, when we look at this history, refreshing our code once every six years or so is often enough, right? We're not behind. This is a good schedule. And also, if I remember correctly from before, going to the code, not the one that's coming out right now, but the one behind it, has been what you all considered a best practice so that it was tested and out there.
Correct.
Right? So it's not like we're picking the old one because it's on sale or something like that. This is a really good one for us.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seems like nobody has any other questions, so thank you so much for your presentation. I guess we will see this in the next regular meeting for adoption, and if we do have any questions, we are always welcome to reach out to city manager and pass our questions on or request some time with Mr. Faulkner so that we can get our answers.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we move on to the public comment section of the evening. We have two individuals signed up for public comment. One of them is Mr. Brian Brewer.
Good evening. The first thing I want to address tonight is the mask mandate. I understand from speaking with, I believe it was the mayor's assistant, that this is actually a county order. This past week, I went to the city clerk's office in order to get paperwork on a court case that I have upcoming, and I was told that I had to wear a mask. In that office, there was one person amongst everybody wearing a mask. I put mine on, but I can, I went on to take pictures of the people, and at that point, I was told that I had to leave, or else the police would be called. From my understanding of the county's orders, there is no criminal or anything, what's it called, sanctions, that it, it's only a civil fine of 2,500, which would be brought under KSA Chapter 60. I guess my biggest concern is, is that as I look around at the council, I see very few people wearing a mask. It, to me, it's a matter of religion, it's a matter of my right. I mean, in Kansas, I'm allowed to be naked as long as I'm not trying to arouse anybody sexually or myself. So why am I being forced to wear a mask in a city building when it's a county mandate, number one? And number two, why is the exception applied to city workers and officials? Nobody? Okay, then I'll move on to part two. On the Fourth of July, I was arrested for protesting under color of law. The officers were acting under the state of Kansas authority, as they were called by the highway patrol. After my arrest, officers discarded my tent and my belongings. I received five stitches in my face while incarcerated at Shawnee County Adult Detention Center, due to the officer's neglect to recognize an American's right to protest and to willfully violate those rights. I came to speak to this body twice in 2018 in order to address the situation of continual constitutional violations by the city's police department. What has this body done since that time to protect the rights guaranteed by the United States Constitution? And why does this body continue to allow the police department to violate the rights of Americans despite the obvious constitutional issues?
Sir, the public comment time is for you to let your council members know what your concerns are. It's not a discussion moment.
There's no time to question and answer.
Feel free to share anything that you want to share with us, and if you do want to have a follow-up and you would like to leave your information, city manager would be more than happy to follow up with you.
Okay, sounds good.
So please, sir, don't leave the chambers till we're done. That way, we can take care of your concerns. Okay, the next person to speak is LaZon Graves.
I wanted to sort of follow up from when I spoke here last time, and I mentioned about, and it's going to be around, along the lines of equity. That's going to be very important to me. The city council, the city is a part of the JDO. There's four voting members, and other members are members of the JDO. And so I had mentioned at the last time I was here about the equity and some type of equity plan or statement or something, because it's not just the city public funds that are contracted out for, but it is the sales tax funds as well. And I'd be surprised or curious, on January or February of next year, considering all these CARE dollars, I see so much money coming for small business from county and from city and from state. from county and from city and from state and from other places. I'd be curious, somewhere after the beginning of the year, of how much of these CARE dollars is going to be contracted out to companies that actually went to women or minority businesses. I think the PP, the CAREs dollars for loans for small businesses, it showed that technically, there were small businesses that got the money, but they were not really the small businesses that sort of keep the engines going. What is there in place to really make sure that small businesses are getting equitable share? Women, African-American women businesses did not get any real fair share of what the monies that were given through those loans. So if, after the beginning of the year, of all the millions of dollars that the city and others are going to spend, that we find that the same groups have still gotten 90-some percent of all of the contracts, I guess I'd be asking myself, to what end are we actually doing these things? I will probably be coming to the JDO meeting because equity is important. When I mentioned the last time, that companies who want incentives or monies that's going to be given, that are public funds, that they should be given to companies, or at least having companies to rise to a level of that they want to participate in the type of equity that we are trying to rise to in our city. Whether that is incentives to a Fortune 500 company, or whether that is going to even local companies, that there are some things, and I hope that we can address this through equity plan. And I think that that's what it's getting to, something that's more comprehensive. It is not just the city and its disparate numbers on procurement, but also the JDO. Because there's going to be a lot of monies. Part of this is dive tailing into a bigger picture at the state that's going on for supplier diversity. I think that Capital City should lead by example. I would think, I believe that if our city does what it can do on dealing with its supplier diversity, that is going to be very beneficial to what potentially comes out of the state level on supply diversity. So I'm, has sent a request to your contractors through the JDO to try to be prepared to, at least try to work to put together some type of equity plan or statement that can be reviewed by the city and the JDO and to be adopted. So that in the future, if they're going to be giving investments to companies, or companies seeking investments, plug and play whatever. If they, it's something that lets them know that we value equity and inclusion here. And that if they want benefits in the monies, that they'll either say yes, or they'll say no. Or they can work with different groups who can help them meet those goals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Graves. At this point in time, we conclude our public comments and we move on to the announcements. If the clerk would read.
Okay, on the 18th agenda, we have, for the appointments, we have several board appointments. Americans with Disability Advisory Council, Board of Mechanical Appeals, Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Board, and Washburn University Board of Regents. Incident agenda, we have an expenditure ordinance. Action items include the adoption of the 2018 Uniform Plumbing Code, approval of 2021 Social Service Grant allocations, and then discussion and/or possible action on small business grant program. And the non-action items include discussion to consider revisions to Topeka Municipal Code relating to the Non-Discrimination Ordinance.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The only comment I have as far as an announcement is obviously to thank the governing body related to all of the work that they put in as we went through the budget process. I want to, you know, make sure that you understand that I received many comments that even though they did not specifically affect the budget, there are things that you're talking about that we need to be looking at as we go into the next year. And some of those things were expressed early on in individual meetings as we've gone along here. Each council member has some concerns and, about things, and also feels there are opportunities to pursue. And so we will go back, I will go back and comb through that. Some of it's in our notes already that we've received. But there are many things that you're bringing up that we need to make sure that we're looking at now and the near future, so that when next year comes around, we're able to answer those things. So just wanted to make sure you knew that we've captured those things and we'll be looking at them going forward. That's it.
Well, the announcement I have tonight is that, as you all know, the Incident Command Team continues working on the COVID situation. We are extremely proud of the fact that our community has heeded the mask ordinance. And I do want to make the comment that the individuals that are on the council without a mask currently are individuals who are at home or are separated from other individuals. But we have seen a decrease in the numbers of COVID cases, significant decrease. We've gone from 390 cases, which I think was our peak, to right now, we're at 207 or 214. We do have an outbreak that has been made public in a senior location. And our prayers are with those families as we hope that everybody is able to come through this. But overall, I think that the biggest concern that our team is currently working on is the school start. And we've been having, actually tomorrow at nine in the morning, I have a meeting with the school superintendents yet again to start talking about their plans, how we're going to reconvene at school and all the plans that teachers are putting, superintendents are putting in place, conversing with the school nurses. And I know that I have been given a report lately with regards to the work that is happening with the Incident Command Team. But right now, this is the bulk of the work, in addition to the work that many of the council members are part of, which is part of the Community Recovery Team. So thank you to all of you. We are all tired of talking about this virus. When I had an opportunity to talk today at the Greater Topeka Partnership Meeting, the Chair's Council, that was the first thing I said. I talked about everything else other than the virus, because we're all tired. We're all tired about this. But my encouragement to everybody is, even though we're still not through this, our community is still working together. I want to make sure that everybody understands that we are concerned as well about our children and making sure that when they are at school, they're safe. We understand the challenges this is going to present to parents because of school is not provided in the same way that we typically do, of five days a week, which is not going to be the case in many places. That's going to put a burden on our families. Our churches are talking about this, because that's another of the groups that we meet with, on how we're going to come along, our parents and support them. Our businesses are talking as well. So overall, thank you to our community for standing by us and working with us through this crisis. And thank you to our staff. Because I think that one of the biggest things that I've seen nationally is that there's been a lot of city administrations that have been so concerned about the virus that they stop patching the potholes and talking about the budgets and things get very complicated. So for us to be able to have a budget approval this evening with the magnitude of cuts and with the financial challenges that we're seeing in the forecast, is nothing short of the devotion of our staff. So thank you very much to all of you. Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Despite my unwillingness to step down, I had been quite busy in District Nine here last week. I, I wanted to tell the individuals I met with, about 20 residents on, I think, Sunday over in the Eighth Street flooding area, Eighth and Randolph Medford. A lot of flooding going on there. And I just wanted to, again, articulate, sorry they were going through that. But I appreciated the feedback and helping to work with them to submit claims to see if we could help out. As long as, along those same lines, I want to thank Bob Sample and Sylvia Davis for the next day meeting with me, truly showing their concern, truly looking to see if there's something that we can do or if we have any issues down there. And then also to Linda Oaks. I reached out to Linda because a lot of these individuals down there were working in Ross Tuage and didn't have the finances for shots. So Linda Oaks of the Health Department made a call, spoke with the KDHE. And as many of you saw the press release come out today, anyone who was affected by that that was working and cleaning up and that those can get a, schedule an appointment by calling the immunization clinic and get a free tetanus shot. So we did, you know, we did hear you. City Manager was active in this as well as, and as it's Bob. And so thank you to all you guys and Linda Oaks as well for your help on that. I also unfortunately had a personal connection to the true victim that, you know, a true victim that was shot by a coward in District Nine. And I'm pleased to read that that person has been taken into custody and have been in contact with the family since the incident. And they want to share their appreciation for the swiftness and thoroughness of the Topeka Police Department. It was the US Marshal that came in to help with that. They've told me that does give them some peace and confidence. So that's pretty much all I have tonight, other than it's been a difficult time with COVID in the budget. And many thanks to Brent and Jessica and entire staff. And then my colleagues who came up with good ideas and good things to help to get this process going. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and sorry for your loss. Councilman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to thank staff and the council and the public again for this budget process. It was, it was broad, deep. And staff met our initial request on the first round. And then we worked on the details. And to me, that's how it ought to go, and I really appreciate everyone. I want to do a quick shout out to Councilman Padilla, who's obviously at work again, helping with the census. It's nice to see that that's going to go forward and hopefully not only recharge, but end with a complete checkoff. But thank you, Councilman, for your work on that. The other thing I'd like to touch on is that various of us have gotten various emails and personal contacts and so on. The issues of race and policing have been fairly volatile with all the other things that have been going on as well the last week or so. And I, this council and our police department and many people in the community have wanted to address any issues and ideas that people had. And I want to encourage the public to participate. Before we meet again as a council, there will be four major opportunities for people to participate with input and/or learn and figure out how they can get involved further in helping work on race relations as well as if there are ways that we can improve policing in this community, to be part of that. And I want to, those four opportunities are that the SPCP, the Strengthening Police and Community Relationships, Partnerships, is having two meetings this week, one tomorrow evening, that a certain number of people can go to live. Otherwise, people can participate in Facebook Live and watch it on the city's channel. And further, they will meet again at noon time on Thursday, if I've got the days straight. I think it's Wednesday evening and Thursday at noon. Then the chief let us know this week that everything has come together and they will be introducing more information about a new SAVE program. And that is one that the Jump People got started and the Topeka Center for Peace and Justice is going to manage. But it's a program on how to engage in the community and dig deep to reduce and prevent violence and how to work with people in the community to do that. And I am so proud of the efforts that everybody put into getting that started and encourage people that are oriented toward working in that way, if not all the ways, to plug in on, that announcement is Friday. So to pay attention to that and look at an opportunity to get involved in the SAVE program. And then, thanks to the mayor and council members that were supportive of that, we ourselves will be having a special meeting to have input about policing in the community. And I just, a lot of the stuff that's been flying around has had to do with national issues, national affiliations, broad-based kinds of concerns, which are very valid. But I really want to encourage people that care about those issues to be respectful of everyone involved, because everybody wants a better community.
I'm glad to hear your thoughts on that, Nolan.
And to do, and to do their homework. I've responded to a lot of people, and I have a lot of people I still need to respond to because there have been so many emails. But the, I've encouraged people to say, okay, if you've got this general concern, exactly what's happening in Topeka and exactly what idea is that you have for us, based on who we are, that we can do a little bit better at. Because I think it's to the great credit of this council and the chief and the community in general, that if we can do better, we want to do it. But I want, I hope that people will be thoughtful and respectful and come spend that time at whatever of those four events in a really constructive way, so that we, we're already a good community, so that we can be better. So, thank you. And that's our meeting on the 25th, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thanks to all the people that reached out about the budget. Jessica Lamandola especially, I mean, she's just been so gracious, honestly, during this time with trying to keep track of me and everybody else, I'm sure. And also, I wanted to give a big shout out to a constituent in North Topeka, young woman, Ms. Laura. She knows who she is, who is just taking such a vital, invested interest in the betterment of her section of North Topeka. And she is an example of what we need in the way of young neighbors, community members, stepping up to not only watch out for the elders in their community, but to keep working to enhance and improve their neighborhoods. Also, I wanted to give out a shout out to Oakland people in regards to the Oakland Pool. I received a couple of emails from constituents. And I want folks to know that I have been in discussion with Shawnee County Commissioner Kevin Cook and Parks and Recreation, Tim Laurent. And we will be having discussions soon surrounding the Billard Pool. The pool is now closed. There's been ongoing unhappiness by a lot of that neighborhood area. I believe wholeheartedly that the pool should not be closed. It should not be replaced by some type of water park. The majority of folks, when I was going door-to-door before getting elected in that area, wanted to maintain the pool and keep the pool. And I'm listening to that voice, those voices which are calling for that. So I will strongly voice those calls for keeping the pool open and having it maintained in a decent manner that all children in that area deserve in District Two. Because they too deserve the same quality of life as other folks across our community, their children as well. So Oakland, I hear you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor, Chief?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that Saturday, East Topeka South had a trash pickup. And we picked up 18 tons of trash out of our area. And so East Topeka South is clean. That's really not an accurate number, because on Friday, the trash gentleman, they picked up, Friday is our trash day, so they even picked up more than what they did on Saturday. So East Topeka South is clean. And I just want to thank all the residents that really participated and got out there and helped one another, dragged it to the curb, and to the staff that made that possible. I wanted the City Manager to know that. And it's just a good, clean feeling when you know that you can just throw that stuff out. And that's what people are doing. They're at home and they're throwing stuff out. They're at home and they're throwing stuff out. So I just, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Ms. Lamandola and her staff as well as the city manager and his staff for all the work on the budget as well as my colleagues. That's it. Good night.
Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. To echo everything that's been said about the city manager and Jessica, I have to compliment them in their responsiveness to the questions that I posed, their helpfulness and making sure that I didn't stumble when I probably would have. And so I appreciate that. We all have something to learn and I learn from them. So I want to thank them for their help and assistance. Councilwoman Heller kind of stole my thunder. But she did put shirt on at least. I do want to thank her for holding it up. I think all of you should have got, received a census shirt. I encourage you to wear it publicly wherever you can, wherever the fashion plate Michael Lesser goes to. I'm sure he'll make a statement. I want to get that word out as often as I can to the public. I think everybody knows that the request to Congress to extend the deadline for the census was not acted upon. So September 30th is our deadline. So we're in a big, big crunch to get all of our responses in. Topeka is doing a fairly good job but could do much better. We have some great plans, working with Monique Glade and the committee that has been put together. They, we met just this week. Trey Hykes has been really good in bringing that body together and getting a lot of good ideas. If you see us in your neighborhood, I give you fair warning. That means your neighborhood is not responding to the census. So get on the phone, get on your computer, do it quickly. It doesn't take long. It's amazing, they had an effort in Junction City here by the Census Bureau people that I've been working with. And they had, I think it was a three or four day event. And they partnered with their city and did it at a civic center. Long story short, the numbers that they were able to count in that event equated into nearly $5 million of funds that that city will receive because of the work that they did. Now, Topeka can do as good and better, and we can't afford to lose that kind of money because people haven't taken time to fill out that census. We're really trying to address everybody's concerns about the safety of the census and the information and it being confidential. So, and I know that they're starting their door to door. So please, for the public, if you haven't responded, you may get a knock at your door. Be courteous to the people who are there. They're just trying to help us bring resources to our community. So help them, fill out your census. And I appreciate everything that everyone's done. There'll be more yard signs of Topeka Counts that are going out, more PSA's going on. This is a headed push now because September 30th will be here very soon. Also, thank you, Councilwoman Heller, for mentioning SAVE. It's a project I've been working on with the Topeka for Center for Peace and Justice and the Chief of Police, Carl Frazier, some people from the Topeka Police Department. I tell you, there's some really dedicated people there trying to do what they can to help this community. And in advance of that, on this coming February at noon at Washburn Tech West, there will be a press conference to announce some initiatives by the leadership of Topeka for Center for Peace and Justice about the SAVE program. So if you can't make it because of limitations on size of audience, watch for the news. So it's good information. It's a great program. It's another thing that will help our city address the violence that we've seen. So thank you very much all for being so diligent and working on this budget. I tell you, it's a pleasure to work with smart people. So thank you very much, Mayor.
So Councilwoman Padilla, you're not going to use, like, Mayor Whitefoot, the census cowboy?
No, no, we're not going to do the census cowboy. I'd probably fall off the horse, but we've got some ideas.
All right. Councilwoman Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to first and foremost thank everybody who went out and voted in last week's primaries. That is how you are heard. That is how you are represented. And it's immensely important to make sure that you express that right if you haven't. I also have been encouraged by the city's Human Relations Commission to encourage people to nominate others for the Troy Scroggins Award. It is all about recognizing people, individuals, and organizations that further the Human Relations Commission's call to ensure fair and equal rights to all citizens of Topeka. And this award, named after Troy Scroggins, who did a lot of work to educate and lift up a lot of the work that was done in the Brown versus Board decision going into that argument. It's meant to recognize outstanding achievements in ameliorating, sorry, it's very late, ameliorating discrimination and prejudice based on race, sex, creed, religion, color, national origin, age, ancestry, disability, and sexual orientation within Topeka. These are things that come up all of the time in our communications with the citizens of Topeka. And so it's very important, not only that we are recognizing those who are doing great work in our community, but also pushing forward to do that more so that this becomes a more just and equitable place. You can, you heard that across the board in the comments that were made about how money is allocated. It came up again with the census and making sure that, yes, the community are being fairly funded. And so this is a way to go ahead and lift up some people in our community in the work that they do so that they can get the support that they need in the future. You can find information to nominate people via the Topeka, Topeka's Human Relations Commission page on the city website, via their Facebook page. Or you can get in touch with Luanne Davis through City Manager Trout's office. And if you have any questions about this further, feel free to email your representative. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Dobler.
Thanks, Mayor. Just very quickly, I'll add to the thanks to the city manager and Jessica Lamandola and staff and the department heads who came through with what we asked, simply a budget without a milllet increase. We appreciate it. The citizens appreciate it. Good job. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Dobler can bring it home.
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Good night, everybody.
I'm sure that you've made a lot of people happy with that statement. Councilwoman Valeria Alcalá.
I just want to make sure before you sign off about executive session, I want, I needed to say something.
There is not an executive session tonight, correct?
I understand that this is the time where you can move to request an executive session. Is that correct? I'm making a motion.
Councilmember can make a motion, yes, at this point in time, as she wishes.
I'm making a motion for an executive session to have presence of city manager and the council president to last no longer than 15 minutes to discuss an unrelated city of Topeka, an unelected city of Topeka employee. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Do you need to ask for a second?
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
Can I ask, Mayor, can I go ahead and just state something with that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that I did the call for an executive session because I had reached out to the city manager and continued to get a refusal about holding an executive session. Particularly, this has to do with the outcome of what was done in relation to the city of Topeka municipal judge that had screenshots that were brought to the entire council's notification. And these were Facebook screenshots that appeared biased in nature. And they were comments on a public Facebook page. I have yet to receive anything from you except a no on any kind of information that you're the one that handles that. And I am to not know anything, or I guess we as a governing body are not to know anything. Yet, I do have to say that when I was thinking about this today, I remember not long ago, we had an executive session about a non-elected city employee that had a similar set of circumstances as we see now. And I'm talking specifically issue with Facebook. So I'm asking, where would the consistency be with this? All may seem easy to get by with stonewalling, but I'm not going to accept that. And even though I'm only one person on this council, I will be honest that it smacks of disregard that me as an elected official and representing folks that I would continue to be denied any kind of understanding about what we're looking at since it was brought to all of our attention and glaring at all of us. We have talked about how so many citizens have lost faith in local government because of a lack of transparency. There is a veil of silence and refusal to understand, a refusal to understand that we are all answerable to the people. Now, it saddens me that there was no second, you know, there wasn't a motion seconding that because I'm thinking, well, maybe folks know something that I don't know. But I would also state that in the contract, city manager, there is specifics that state that there is an accountability that the city manager has to individuals of the governing body. And you and I can talk about that later because I'm trying to scroll through it right now. But I got this specifically from your contract. So when I just get this refusal and stonewalling and veil of silence and lack of transparency, it just feeds into more frustration that I have as an elected official. And I will just tell you that I'm going to continue to push for this. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.